All right. We got a very small audience, so if anyone has any questions, they can step up to the mic and, you know, there's not a lot of people here tonight, so we'll top it off at about four minutes. So everybody has a chance to talk or ask questions, or if there is no one that is going to come up to the mic, we also have the questions that we passed out that, you know, we can go over that have been asked, and we've tried to answer them. So if anybody would like to approach the mic with any questions or anything?
Thank you for coming up.
Oh geez, this is too close to my face and it keeps going.
They're loud, aren't they?
Yeah.
Good evening.
Hi. I guess you need at least one question.
What is your name, sir? I'm sorry.
Pardon?
What is your name?
Wayne Anderson.
Can we have your address too, sir?
Oh, you want the address?
Mm-hmm.
8972 Carriage Crossing.
Thank you, sir.
That's in Eden.
Yes.
Okay, the question is, why are the total and administrative amounts now higher in the contingency budget than in the original case?
I might turn that one over to...
It winds up being, as the allocations come through for the benefits, they're allocated on dollars, and when we move things around, it just changed the percentage, so they generated a greater percentage of the benefits went to the administrative line.
Why do they move around?
Because...
The question I asked was, why do they move around?
Because when we eliminated the equipment, it lowered the total percent of the budget, and I used that total percentage of the budget to allocate the benefits.
Because New York State mandates that we take, Don, what was it, ninety from the...
About $95,000 has to come out of the budget for equipment when you go to contingency.
So that is why the percentage changed, because the amount of the budget then dropped.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking. Kathy, taking good notes? That was a first for me. Hi.
Hi, good evening. I'm Alan Silver. I live at 3006 Bly Road in Eden, and I have several questions regarding the reserves and the use of the reserves. The first thing, you know, you're looking to apply over $1,100,000, over $1,100,000 of reserves towards the budget. How much in reserves will be left for the school district?
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna start with the $1.1 million. Included in that number is the $596,000 that was already voter authorized to use for the bus purchase, so the additional...
And how many buses?
Well, I'm just curious, why don't we address the question? That's what I'm used to as an attorney. How much of reserves do you have left?
So, want me to answer some of that?
Well, it depends. The reserves that I have left that I can use to balance a budget at this rate will last for eight years.
What is the approximate total?
4.7 million of the ones that are available to use to lower the taxes.
That is at the end of the 2018-19 school year.
Right, that's what I assumed. Okay, that's a good answer. That pleases me a great deal. I didn't know how much reserves. The second thing, which I'm curious, and I have some experience with budgeting, it seems to me, when I looked at the budget, and I'm pleased with the first answer, it makes me very happy. The second thing is, it looks like you're applying the reserves to expenses that are recurring. Added staff, electricity, since apparently you can't rely on the gas at all. Applying reserves to recurring expenses isn't usually done or considered a good idea. Am I wrong that you're applying these reserves to expenses that are recurring?
No, but we are also applying the reserves to some of the expenses for which the reserves were designed to cover, and so...
Such as what?
Such as what? Such as the...
Purchase of the school buses and the equipment.
Retirement contribution reserve.
That was from the $596,000 that was approved, that's fine, but the other reserves, which we're talking about, over $600,000, well, over $500,000, it seems to me that you have a lot of recurring expenses. Added teachers, social workers, I know that has to be, and added staff for the safety of our children, et cetera. But it is, it seems that those reserves are being applied to recurring expenses that'll be ongoing year after year, and there'll be a budget deficit and use of reserves ongoing. Am I incorrect?
Well, reserves, yes, there will always be reserves used for the budget, and if you're familiar with budgeting, you understand that when you budget 18 months in advance for an expense, you have to budget a cushion in, so some of the reserves cover that. But the other side of the coin is, if you look in the reserve plan online, there was talk, I believe that it's been out on social media as well, that according to our reserve plan, we need to reshuffle some of the monies out of the unemployment reserve because it's overfunded to the plan. And so those are the reserves we're utilizing this year because the anomaly that occurred this year that had a negative $300,000 in my tax cap calculation will not be recurring next year, so the hope is then that will stabilize our budgetary figure for the tax cap.
Okay, could you explain that? I didn't understand that last part.
Okay.
I didn't say I was a finance person. I'm just a country lawyer, that's all.
I'm sorry, but I'm sure you can do the same back to me with equal issues. What I'm saying is, there's a complicated formula, and in that formula, your prior year's capital exclusion is subtracted out and your new year's capital exclusion is put in. Well, because our debt service has gone down, and because of the capital project work came on and the financing of it, we had a $300,000 negative number in that calculation and nothing to restore it. So it lowered, that's why we went with a .46 tax cap maximum this year. So next year, that anomaly won't be there, so that should help us to be able to start to pick up again some of these recurring costs with the actual tax cap dollars.
All right, so you think there won't be a great need to use reserves on an ongoing basis?
We always use reserves, but yes, it should diminish next year's, the hope and the plan. And as we go through this budget, because of the short timeframe, what is budgeted, as you know, will be handled, may be handled differently by this board as far as what we're allowed to spend when we get into the actual budget numbers, and some of the one-time costs may come out to help support that so that we do balance the budget in the actual workings of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome for asking.
More than satisfied, thank you.
Who else?
Mike Werra, 2772 Shetty Road, Eden.
Good evening.
There's a couple of questions. When we're talking about reserves, how do you get so much reserves that can last eight years? Are we being overtaxed that much, or why is it so much?
Those are an accumulation of, in a budget, for example, a school district can only spend what the taxpayers authorize. So when you vote on a budget, Proposition 1 is always, how much can we spend? So, for example, special education is a good example. When you have a family of high-needs children move into a district, you have to have those costs, because if you don't build enough into your budget for those, and you do have the high-needs children move in, you have no way to fund it, and you can't go back and you can't spend more than you have, so you would have to cut from your regular education programs. So budgets are designed to prevent the unknown from hurting existing program, and in that process, there's always a little surplus. If there were no surplus, then your budgeting, I would find you being perfect 18 months in advance, and I don't think anyone can project what's gonna happen. Fuel prices can rise, you could have a snowstorm, you could have a boiler breakdown and not know that it was going to. Suddenly, you could have something break in the buildings that you need for education, and this allows you, by having extra funds in there, to cover those things, to keep the school...
Yeah, I'm just saying, it seems like a little excessive. Like, last year, the budget rose over 6%, and used enough reserves to cover that to keep it under the 2% tax increase for the taxpayer. And then this year, the budget raises 3.7%, and you're still using reserves to cover that to keep it under 2% from tax. But in two years, the budget's almost, oh, 9.7% higher, which now the third year, it's already incorporating your taxes. So if you get no increase at all, you're still paying over 9% in 10 years, which has surely been like a 4% increase. Why can't you budget closer to that? It's more than twice the amount I think it should be. Does that make any sense?
So, the, in the budget, there's 3% budgeted for, to put back in reserves every year. That's what New York State wants the ideal school system to do. So in that $300 million budget, or, I'm sorry, $30 million budget...
So 3%, 3% a year, so over a million dollars?
Yeah, 1.2 million is basically scheduled to be put into reserves, but that's also there for the possibility of, you know, additional costs that we don't expect 18 months out. But that's what New York State's asking every school district to do, is to budget 3%.
So there's 2% tax cap, that's just smoke and mirrors. It goes up more than 2%.
It's a formula, and it's...
Yeah, like I said before, like, in two years, it could go up 10%.
No, I think you're calculating it wrong.
The budget, not your taxpayers' expense, but the budget is actually going up 10%, which makes, like, say it went up 9.7% in two years, then in the third year, that's already incorporated into your taxes, so you're paying on that already.
No, because we...
Actually, your tax levy did go up more than 2%.
We start the budget year off, when we start talking about the budget, we look at what we used last year from the reserves, and normally, we're right around that dollar amount that we've used the year before, so that offsets that. So it's not like...
But if you're adding the years together, it doesn't make sense.
But we're not, we're not, we're not passing, I see what you're saying, that we're passing that cost on to you the next year without you voting on it. No.
It's already in your budget now. The budget did increase 6 points.
Right, but we start with the same amount of capital reserves that we started with, so that offsets that, just like the year before.
It offsets your, the taxpayers for that year.
But can I make a comment?
Still going up.
In 08, 09 school year to the 18-19 school year, the budget has only, on average, 1.46% increase, just looking at a year. That's what the...
Including reserves?
Yes.
Yes, because some years it's less, some years it's more.
Yeah, and you're using reserves to offset the cost, which in years down the line, the budget's still increasing.
By 1.46% on the average.
Yeah.
In 10 years. And you're correcting your point.
You are correct, in that we use the budget, we use reserves to offset some of the costs. You are absolutely right.
But we're not passing that on the next year.
How does, that doesn't make any sense. You keep raising the budget, like, last year, it raised over 6%, but you use reserves to cover that. Now this year, it's at that 6%, and now you're gonna raise it in order to 3.7%, and now the third year, it's 9.7% higher.
But we're still taking money out of the reserves.
But even if you look at what you're paying in your household income for your utilities, your groceries, everything goes up every year.
Not like 10% in two years.
There are things...
What I'm coming down to is that there's too much in reserves, and you're using that to cover the cost of 2% cap, it's like smoke and mirrors, where the price is really going up. You're really spending more money. You're spending 10% more and not 2% a year more. Does that make sense?
We're budgeting, that doesn't mean we're spending. We're budgeting, we're projecting.
Then what you don't spend goes in reserves.
Correct.
Correct.
But still, people are overtaxed.
But New York State mandates that we have a certain amount in reserves, or we would be considered a district in financial stress.
And that's 3%?
They want 3% a year.
A year?
Yes, that's what I mean.
So we just had an audit with that done here.
So it's New York State's fault, not, not...
I'd like to blame a lot of things on New York State. Now, I can't talk the numbers like you guys are talking here, but this is what I can say, is that I know in my own personal budget, things have gone up more than .46% on just about anything that I touch. Our formula in Eden is set up so that we don't have growth, we don't have an actual 2%, we know our costs are more than .46%, and I would like to blame New York State for that, because there are districts that are adjacent to us who actually can be in the tax levy and have 3.86%, can have 5%, but Eden doesn't fall into any of those categories at all. Last year, we cut almost a half a million dollars in staff alone to try to balance this out, to right-size this. But as long as our tax cap continues to be less than the CPI in terms of the way the formula works, we will continue to take things out of reserves in order to balance what we feel is a good education for the kids.
All right, as far as the sports go, why does Eden need AstroTurf?
Okay, so you, are you okay with the first answer? You move on? I just wanna make sure that we don't...
No.
You wanna go?
People are overtaxed. Yeah, right.
Okay.
I'm not okay with it.
So, so why, so the question is, is why do we have the turf field?
Yeah, why does a high school need that much of an expense?
So, so the turf field is separate from...
It's the only handful of people that are using it.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead and finish your question.
There's only a handful of people are using that, you know, that field, and when they get out of high school, they're not gonna pursue that as a career.
Okay. The turf field is separate from your annual budget. The turf field, along with lighting in this auditorium, the entrances in all the buildings, the site work in all of the buildings, the abatement, all of that was voted on in the referendum of 2015. So that's separate from this, okay? They're not connected.
Where the money's come from for that? Was that taxpayers, or was that state aid?
That referendum in 2015, do you wanna talk about that from your perspective? Where does that money come from?
The money comes from a blend. The blend is, some of it comes from Eden taxpayers, but I believe the number here in Eden is 72% comes back to the district as building aid.
Of 95% of our work.
So on every dollar, we're getting 72 cents back that was spent in additional state aid to help pay for that, because the state is looking to keep the buildings and the facilities in certain conditions.
So why waste it on the sports field?
So, one of the propositions...
And if you don't use it for something like that, why can't you put that in reserves?
I can't.
You can't, you can't take capital project. I can't get it unless I spend it.
So you spend it frivolously, whether you have to or not, whether you have it or not?
If we do a capital project, let's say, for example, I was going to do a capital project for $1,000, but I only spent 900, they only ate the 900, they don't give me extra money. They're only trying to keep the facilities into a certain condition, and to level the playing field between wealthier districts and less affluent districts. So they have a formula that generates how much state aid you receive for your capital projects.
Would it be wrong to send it back to government?
To send one back.
The money that you're allowed to spend.
You mean to not spend it?
Yeah, not spend it.
That wasn't the will of the taxpayers in 2015 when they approved the referendum.
And if I could chime in just for a second, they would simply give it to someone else. So, so there's no certificates awarded for being frugal or letting your, letting your buildings crumble?
Well, yeah.
What they do is...
I'm not talking about buildings and things that are needed, but like, to frivolously spend it.
So, so, to address the field, the old football field, which was basically just used as a football field, the drainage had collapsed, we had a fairly significant grub problem up there, and for a number of games, was actually, if you're up there, there's actually a cone in the middle of the field where the field had collapsed underneath, and so nobody stepped in the hole. And so the field, if it were grass, was in need of significant drainage repair and a significant overhaul, and then beyond that, the challenge was, it still wasn't gonna be used.
It was only used for football.
It would only be used for 30 events per year. And so I was a big champion of the turf field so that it could be used basically every single day times three. So typically, during, in season, there's a practice after school, 2:15 to 5-ish, there's a second practice from 5 to 7-ish, and then there's a game from 7 to 9, and that happens at least five days a week, and often on Saturdays, there's at least three or four games and practices.
You named the sports. Well, Cindy, can you do something with the humming?
So...
Is Jack humming? Is that it?
And so, when it comes to the sports that are played there, in springtime, we have six lacrosse teams. Obviously, the varsities play on there and practice on there daily, six and seven times a week. This year, they were allowed to practice seven times per week, no days off because of the bad weather we had in the beginning. In fall, much busier, we have two football teams, we have either two or three field hockey teams, depending, and then we have five soccer teams.
You all use that one field?
Yeah.
Oh, they all use the one field. And so, so that field is, so certain practices have to happen on grass just because of logistics. They can't all practice, but sometimes we'll have the varsity girls and the varsity boys' lacrosse team playing on separate ends of the field. And in all honesty, and not being facetious at all, I would invite you or anybody to come up and see what that field is like on a Friday night. I mean, it's packed with people and packed with players. And so the fact that it's, as you alluded to, just a handful of people, that...
It was a handful of people.
It absolutely, 100% was a handful of people, because, because...
Yeah, another example would be North Collins.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Another example would be North Collins School, that's a smaller school, and they got that AstroTurf baseball field.
So we go over and use their baseball field?
And softball.
For softball and baseball, 'cause they have that field.
And truthfully, they actually, I was at a game there where they had to rent lights because they didn't have the foresight to put lights in their field, so they actually had to pay money to rent lights. We have LED lights, so that the costs to run them are very low, and they're reimbursed from the state for the, during the capital improvement project, and so I would, I would honestly...
We've also rented the field to colleges when it snowed and they couldn't use their own fields. I'm not sure, what did we get? 500? $500 a usage by the colleges to use the field?
Where's that money go? Does that go to reserves?
I'll let Werra answer that. Where does the money go? She's afraid to buzz again.
Figured out who the buzzer was. That money goes into the general fund, and then at year end, when there's hopefully a surplus, and it's determined by the Board of Education what reserves they want to fund with that surplus. My goal and my advice to this Board of Education will be to put it into a repairs reserve so that if there needs any work on the field, that it won't come out of the taxpayers' funds, it will come out of that pot of money.
When we did the analysis on the field, and it's a great question, and I'm so grateful that you've asked it, there would've been hundreds of thousands of dollars that would've gone in to repair the field itself, and it still would've only been a single-use field.
When you compare to the price that they did end up paying?
I'm sorry?
What price did you end up paying for that field?
You know, I don't know the total cost on that, but we can certainly look that up.
It's in the millions, I believe.
But you know what we're getting, that we're getting, we're getting, through capital project, we get money back. So as opposed to repairs, just general repairs, you don't, but we can look that up, not a problem.
So, so in general, the decision was made, and I, again, I championed it and I stood in front of it for years, instead of putting hundreds of thousands of dollars into a facility that won't get used, to put more money into a field that will get used every single day...
And we use it for our phys ed classes, too. If, I'm sorry, I keep interrupting you.
No, you're good.
But I wanna use a beautiful example of this spring. So everybody thought it was spring, and then we got dumped on with two feet of snow. The only teams that not have to end up on a school bus and go to another school district's field were our teams that could use the turf. We had to pay for a bus and bus drivers to bus our kids to other schools to use their fields, because we have to play. And so we're spending money, one way or the other, it just depends on where our kids are playing and what we're spending.
And as a final thought, if, you know, we don't make up the rules for New York State, ultimately, if we don't do a capital project, they will simply give it to Poughkeepsie or Binghamton or Niagara Falls or whoever for their turf field or their auditorium renovation or whatever, because it's in the state budget, that X number of dollars are gonna go towards capital improvements within schools in New York State. And so, again, championing that idea, since you as a New York State taxpayer and me as a New York State taxpayer are paying for it anyway, we might as well get some benefit from it.
Yeah, seeing that they're offering us that money, we should choose to use it. If you don't use it on the buildings now, put it in reserves and use it for something later.
Well, you can't, you gotta spend it before you get it.
Yeah, I know.
Welcome to New York State. I mean, that's not our rule. I mean, you gotta spend it before you can get it.
And that's just what's wrong with the federal government, too, giving it away, and if you don't spend it, so you're forced to spend it, or else you're gonna give this...
Totally agree with you.
We don't, we don't get to make the rules.
I know you don't have the control over that, but that's...
We live by the rules, we don't make the rules.
No, we don't like any of them either.
All right, just one more question was on, on the budget. The way you had it listed on the paper, though, Proposition 1 and Proposition 2, and you got a month, you know, for $30,93,000 for Proposition 1. But the proposed budget was $29,494,130?
If you read the requirement...
Proposition 1, is that including the cost of Proposition 2 already? That's what it looks like?
Yes, it's in the total number, but in the budget notice, it has to be removed, and the taxpayers have already authorized the $596,000 elobusts and equipment purchase.
So, or voting on it is just Proposition 1, not Proposition 2?
Correct. There will only be one proposition on this vote.
But on the first vote, there was two different votes, Proposition 1 and Proposition 2.
Correct. So the reason was, in the first vote, the actual budget, which was Proposition 1, needed to pass at 60%, and it did not. The buses only needed to pass as a simple majority, as well as the Board of Education members as a simple majority. Those, Proposition 2 and the board members both passed.
Oh, I see, so Proposition 1 got voted down, Proposition 2 could still get voted in?
That's correct.
Did that happen?
Yes.
Okay.
So this vote will only be on the budget.
Proposition 1 is only on the budget, okay. All right, that's it.
Great questions. Well, you wanted to, you wanted to answer something about Standards &amp; Poor, or...
Well, one of the things that everyone is right to be concerned with is the reserves, because I have the preliminary report from Standards &amp; Poor's, our bond writing company, and I just wanna quote what they have in there. Their report says, "The credit position for Eden Central School is very healthy." So that we got an AA3 rating, which lowers our interest rate. Our current band interest rate was 1.8959 on $20 million. So every time we keep our financial aspects healthy, it assists the district when we have to borrow funds for capital projects. If we don't keep our buildings in proper shape, and let's say we decided never to do another capital project until the roof was leaking and it was a dire emergency, like this one, what would happen to the district is, we would have to somehow peak and charge more for property taxes to cover the payments of the mortgage, or what we call that service in a school district. So instead of being able to keep taxes relatively level, they would peak and valley, which would be very difficult with the tax cap. So New York State really does everything it can to encourage us to keep our facilities in good condition, because our students' safety and health is what they're concerned with, and we cannot have buildings that are in disarray, so they try to make it beneficial for us to go out and do projects. That's why we get such great A ratios, that's why they pay us over the 15 years that we take out our mortgage for, our debt service, our bonds. So they help pay their share... So they help pay their share of those bonds every year, plus some of the interest.
No, I'd like to say, too, is that in a capital project, there were definitely things in this capital project were not a necessity. We did a lot, an awful lot of health and safety. Warm, safe, and dry was our three words. The abatement, we went back and spent probably a half a million dollars more than we had anticipated to abate the places that we had to. And right in the middle of that came the lead testing as a mandated project that we needed to take a look at. But we also want to encourage people to move here. When I came in 2013, the graduating class was 156. Our graduating class right now is about 104 to 110, and our incoming kindergarten first grade class is about 85 to 90. And that's true in many of our adjacent districts, not just this one. And so school districts truly are competing to get students and families to move into their area. And so being able to... We know we're geographically located, right next to Hamburg, right next to Lancaster, right next to East Aurora, Orchard Park. And so we do take a look at what our families are looking for when they want to move and what is it that we can provide them. And so one of the other things that was in this capital project is the state-of-the-art technology infrastructure so that we can have our students be on iPads, be on Chromebooks. That one actually was a necessity because we just couldn't do anything with technology. But I would admit to you, sir, that not everything in it was a necessity. Much of it is, though, to market families to move to Eden as well. And our numbers are increasing at the elementary level, and I'm very pleased to say that. Because if, in fact, we end up with 60 students in a grade, it's not going to be healthy for Eden at all. And the reason that your taxes have also gone up, in my opinion, and I don't have quantitative numbers to give you, is because fewer of you are paying the same amount. More people move in, more houses get built, the more the pie gets divided up. Thank you for all your questions.
Do we have any other questions?
My name is Judy Murdoch. I live at 4726 Eckert Road. And at the previous hearing, I was kind of informed I could get more information on the website. There were a lot of questions asked that evening, and I kept visiting the website to see where the answers were to those questions. And there was nothing available until I came in tonight that I could find. And I am quite computer literate. And some of the questions that were asked that night, I don't feel are covered in this. Questions that were about the lights being left on all the time and various things. And as a person who was a buyer for a company, I hear a lot of comments here about money, but it's all vague. I don't hear concrete numbers, and I hear supposition. And I'd like to hear more concrete information as far as we save. As a buyer for a business, I can't go in and say, "Well, I saved you money." They want percentages. They want information. And when you're telling me it saved me money for you to put in the AstroTurf field, give me some concrete numbers. Let me know the truth of it, not just a whitewash of what's going on.
And I'll be happy to get back on the field.
You know, and I mean other things as well that have been discussed tonight. You're throwing out, you know, different facts and figures, but they're not facts and figures. They're just generalities. And I think that's a lot of people's complaint that I heard in the crowd the last time, that there is no drilling down in the budget that you see. You know, we're told that the administration information is, you know, like the administrator's salary or expenses include a couple secretaries. Is it too much, at least for that expense, to ask for a breakdown on what the salaries are rather than just saying the total cost for that department? I don't want the minutia of the budget, but necessarily, but there are certain things that people look at it and they say the superintendent is making $245,000 when, in fact, that included a couple secretaries. But it'd be nice to see a little more of a breakdown and more transparency in some of those figures.
So I'm going to let Laura does the figure, so I'll let her perhaps show. She, you're not up there, so you know. And if, in fact, there are specifics that you do want, I'll go back and look at the tape from the last time and see what wasn't answered, and that would be on me. So my apologies if, in fact, something wasn't answered at the last time. It would be on me to do that.
Okay. And then I did the AstroTurf. You are making arrangements because that will have to have crumb rubber added into it, I'm sure, on a regular basis, correct?
Well, there's at least two or three, maybe four bins of crumb rubber that came with the project, so that's already up there. So that is a fair amount of supply. I can't say it'll last a year, four years, or five years, but it's there.
Having worked at the tire recycling facility in Lockport, you have to be careful how you store it because it may not last the four years.
Yes, it's inside. It's indoors, and so we store it preciously. And we're hoping that some of the rental fees, as we continue to grow our understanding of the needs in the greater community, not just in Eden, but the greater community, to have some of those funds come in, as Laura pointed out, to add that into some sort of repair slash replacement fund somewhere between 12 and 15 years from now.
Because I believe that there are figures out there that tell you on how many hours a field is used, what the replacement requirements are going to be. Because AstroTurf is going out of Western, or the crumb rubber to go into it is going out of Western New York on a daily basis to universities, to professional football stadiums. So I'm sure that the research is out there to let you know what the maintenance costs are.
Our engineers have given us the schematics on that. It just depends, you know, we haven't used it long enough to see if their schematics match what we're seeing.
Right.
You know, and some of it is a practice and a learning, too. So I know that Mrs. Proudman had talked about the lights. And we know when they first went up that we were still trying to figure out remotely or manually when to put them on, when to take them off. Some of it, we had to do some testing on. But I know that our Director of Athletics Now has the app on her phone. Our custodian has the app on the phone, and within 20 minutes of those kids being off that field, if not sooner, those lights are now off. I can tell you at least three times, we had words with the custodian about going out and putting the lights on at 5:00, when we didn't need them till 8:00. Some of that's just learning. But boy, if she sees them up now and it's light outside, I'd love for her to call because that's not our intention either at all.
And that's a comment, too. You had to talk to the custodian three times about it. You just said you had to, like, three different times.
We work with people.
Yeah, I know.
I don't want to talk to him three times. I wish he'd gotten it the first time. But I think each time, he got it a little bit better. But part of it was us learning, too. You can't turn them on when it's dark. So when is it dark enough to turn the lights on? So it's a learning.
I appreciate that. But that's, like you said, the LED is less expensive.
Absolutely.
How much? Is one example of the stuff that I'm talking about.
I'm going to give that to Laura because we haven't had that before. So I don't have the exact numbers that you're looking for on what are the savings of LED.
I mean, that can be done, but at this point in time, I don't have those exact numbers. And I think if I tell you anything else, from what I'm listening to, you're not going to be happy either because you're going to be saying, "I'm talking in generalities." Well, the problem is, it's really hard when you don't know the questions in advance to talk in specifics. And if you look up on the screen, there's your line-by-line budget. I just pulled it off the website. It's on our website.
Okay, and the breakdown is in that because I...
Yes.
Is it searchable?
No, it's just a PDF.
It's just a PDF unless you have...
So the easiest way to get to it is there's a banner across the top of the website. It says "Services,"
Right.
And it'll say "Business Office." And then when you get to the Business Office...
Right, but I mean, like I said, there are some things I'm seeing, multiple things, without having the familiarity that you do with the budget. Yes, there is a line-by-line item, but as I started looking at things, there's, you'll see District Clerk in two or three different buckets that it's coming out of.
Because on our consolidated fiscal report called in ST3 to New York State, we're required to give that detail. So that's how our budgeting is. That's how our accounting is done. It's just us following the regulations for a school district.
And to make it even more complicated, they've changed it again so that now we need to do it by building cost. But we are more than happy to have you come in and show us what you think would make it easier for a person in our region, and we'll see what we can do to try to present it in a way that makes sense to you. We've never been asked to do that personally before.
I personally, I don't know. I don't think I'm the only one.
But you know what you're looking for. We'd be happy to sit down with you.
Maybe other people are not, but you know...
We'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Part of it is the convoluted way that we're required to report. So we don't go beyond that, but we'd be more than happy to do that if you thought it was helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for your questions.
Is there anyone else?
Yeah, Julie, it's gone. I'm looking.
Hi. Judy Maynard, 8725 Violet Parkway in Eden. I sat through a lot of the meetings that had to do with that turf. And I think one of the things that was not mentioned tonight was the safety. And that was the thing that really bowled me over, is the cushioning and that. And I think we can't lose sight of, it's for our students, and some of these decisions we're making, it's for our students. It's not always just money. It's what's going to benefit the students. And I just wanted to make that clear, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we had to make that decision early in the installation of the turf to go with the safety of it. And kind of where the capital projects is right now, the excess dollars we have left to, you know, finish projects and stuff like that, instead of putting the safety into the turf, we would have been just putting, changing out more doors. I mean, that's what it...I mean, it was really, you know, a decision at the time we had to make, and hindsight, it's, you know, it's looking better.
I would say, too, that having to authorize all the money that goes out on the capital project is that it just takes forever. It was 2014 when we started planning the capital project. It was December 2015 when the referendum was voted on. It was September of '15 when the architects finished because they can't work before a referendum and still get aided. So September or October of '16, before it was sent to the State Education Department. It was March, I think, of '17 before SED approved it. And so we're already working off of an anticipated cost from 2015 all the way to spring of 2017. We went out for bid in April, I think, of 2017 and started working right then over the summer of '17. This capital project is due to be finished May 31 of 2019. And so I am intensely grateful to our architects and our capital and our construction management group because they did such a good job of trying to figure out the cost two years, three years ahead of time, that we're actually able to get more safety features into this project than we thought we could. We had a new PA system in the original capital project numbers and had to take out the PA system because we didn't think that we could afford it in the budget, and it's now back in. So I'm really, really happy with what they've been able to accomplish. An example would be if you were an employee in this district who travels from one building to the other, you really have no way of knowing that the other building just went into lockdown. You can't tell from the outside. If you're a school bus driver and you're driving up to a building, you have no idea that that building is in a lockdown. But by the time we finish this project, there will be blue lights on top of every building that will automatically go off on all buildings the moment that any one building goes into a lockdown. All three entrances, by the time we're finished with abatement, electrical, safety features, will not allow anyone, even if it's a parent that I know well, into that building without them going through a database. And so, but these have to be sequenced in a certain way to make them work. What's complicating all of this, too, is the Smart Schools Bond. I mean, everybody was thrilled. We got 1.9? No, maybe $900,000 in...that sounds better to me. So about $900,000 in a Smart Schools Bond. Laura wasn't here, to her credit, but it's held up in Albany. And who would expect it to still be in Albany? How many months later, Lucinda?
October 1st.
Of what year?
October 1st.
October 1st of last year, and we're not even close to being one of the schools reviewed. And all of that matters. And so what I've just done, what I just did, and I haven't even had a chance to share it with the board yet, is I just authorized taking money out of the Smart School Bond, which is coming from New York State, and putting it and having to pay for it through our capital project so we can get our new phones because our phones are down again. Because our phones are so old, they're obsolete, and none of our new wires will wire to our old phone system and let it work. And so it's this constant, whichever speaker said, it's this constant federal and state regulations and promises that just get in the way of school districts to try to move forward. So I'm done venting.
Thank you. Any other questions from...or comments?
Again, I hope this sheet with the questions is helpful to you. My apologies that it took as long as it did. If you have specific questions, please send them to me by email. My email is on the website, too. Otherwise, it's simply sansalone@edencd.org. Or call me. More than happy to research any specific question that you have. And I don't remember your name, I'm sorry, but I will go back to that first hearing and see what I have not answered. Okay? Okay.
Can I just say one thing? When we're talking...can you hear me? Is this on?
I don't know if you're on.
Okay.
Here you go.
Oh, thanks. When we're talking about, somebody had used the term transparency, and I feel like as a board, let's just use the turf field for an example. I feel like, and this is what people miss out on a lot, is we talk about a lot of these things. We talked about the pros and cons of the grass field versus the turf field, and the cost to maintain and the cost to fix versus the AstroTurf field. I felt like ad nauseam for a long time in trying to get our ducks in a row for this capital improvement project. And I feel like all of those numbers were put out there at one point. I can't recall...I mean, when we're talking about 2014, '15, I can't remember what I had for breakfast yesterday, let alone something from three to four years ago. So I don't want people to get the impression that because we sometimes lack specifics now, that they were never talked about in the past. Because at some point, you'll be able to find specifics on almost everything we've talked about at some board meeting. I'm sure, as you heard, we talk about so much so frequently that, like I said, I can't recall numbers off the top of my head when people ask me things. But I know in generalities, and I know that's not what people want to hear, that at one point, we did weigh out the pros and cons, and there was a very...
And approved a dollar amount.
Right. And it was very obvious what the savings would be, what the benefits would be, and how the increase in costs outweighed what we would have been left with had we stayed with it. So it's not as if specifics aren't ever talked about. It's just we don't rehash numbers over and over again for the sake of time, for the sake of...but we can get those to you. And I think Sandy said it perfectly. If you have a question, if there's something that we're not saying, it's not because we're trying to be vague and trying to hide it. It's because usually at some point, we've talked about it already. But it's not that we can't get them to you. So I appreciate that statement, and I just want people to know that I don't think we're trying to hide anything up here. We're more than happy to answer and get information to people.
Can I piggyback on that? Is this on?
There you go.
This is my first year on the board, and I've learned a lot, a lot of great things. And I've also been a little discouraged about the social media piece. And I know it's 2018, and I'm a special ed teacher, and I spend countless hours teaching my students the do's and don'ts of social media. But Jen just spoke to it. We're not hiding anything here. If you have a question, we are more than happy to answer it. And I would rather you come to a meeting, I think we're all in agreement, come to a meeting, email Sandy... you come to a meeting, I think we're all in agreement, come to a meeting, email Sandy, speak to one of us, so that we can direct you in the right direction, versus seeing things put on social media that aren't necessarily... I'm not saying they're lies, but they're tainted and they're skewed. And that's the one thing that I think negative I take away from my first year on the board. Other than that, I think this has been a great experience, and I look forward to more. But the, you know, come to us. We're human beings. We will answer whatever we can, how we can, or we will direct you to the people that can answer it. We're not trying to hide anything.
Okay. Time?
Yep, 7:5.
Okay. So you're gonna move into...
Yeah, we'll move into the...
No, it's your side on the mic.